Thanks to you and the organizing committee for giving me the opportunity to address you today. I'm going to talk about the eTrix project. You already heard this mentioned by Philippe just before the coffee break. eTrix stands for the European Translational Research Information and Knowledge Management Service, which says it all. This is a project designed to provide a platform for data management and data exploration in translational biomedical research. And Philippe mentioned this also, this is a project that is financed by the IMI, the Innovative Medicines Initiative, which is a joint undertaking between the European pharmaceutical industry and the European Commission. And for those of you not familiar with the IMI, with its goals, ideals, and organization, I'd like to take just a few minutes to put you in the picture there because I think this is this is an interesting aspect of the way that the the research landscape is developing in Europe today. We heard from from Winhaide in his talk about changing paradigms in the pharmaceutical industry, that the the industry, like everybody else, is under a great deal of pressure, not only to deliver, but also to be very open about their their data and results and everything. And this this all ties into this this kind of same discussion. So the the IMI is is a way of joining public and private forces. It is now the largest public-private partnership in the life sciences worldwide. And it was initiated about eight years ago now, almost eight years ago, and the first project started in 2008, with joint financing from the from FP, which is the European Federation of Pharmaceutical Industries, and the European Commission, and today has a budget of round about five billion euros. This has proved to be a very successful model. We had the the initial projects, as I said, were set up starting 2008 under IMI I. And after about the first five or six years, it was clear these projects worked very well, and it was decided to continue this this effort under IMI II, which is which is now kicked off and underway. And a major feature of this partnership is that the funding comes jointly. So in this five billion budget, we have two and a half billion that comes from the European Commission, originally from FP seven, now from from Horizon 2020. And there are matching funds provided by the pharmaceutical industry partners who participate in these projects. And this this money and resources comes directly from the pharmaceutical companies themselves. The major goals of these projects are to make the the drug R and D process in Europe more innovative, more efficient, to improve the attractiveness of Europe as a an environment for conducting biomedical research, and at the same time, to adapt these research processes to the changes in society. So some of the kind of things that that Winhaide mentioned, that, for example, also patient interest groups and other public interest groups are also among those who put pressure on all of us to make use to make the best possible use of our data. So some specific features of the of the IMI. In setting up projects like eTrix or or any of the others that are running, the companies and the public partners work together and in a consortium with joint decision making. The funding, as I said, comes from from both sides, from the public and the private partners. And the the cash funding from the European Union goes then to the academic partners, to the patient organizations, the biotech companies who participate in these projects. The pharma industry finances their own their own contributions. However, the the research agenda and the projects are defined based on the agenda of industry in terms of the potential impact on research, on regulatory aspects, and on medical practice. So the FPM maintains what's called the Strategic Research Agenda, which is a living document that's updated continuously to reflect the changing face and the changing landscape in biomedical research, in drug development, and, for example, also in regulatory aspects of getting drugs to market. And all of this is managed by a neutral broker that facilitates participation. This neutral broker is the IMI Executive in Brussels. The community is now made up of a very diverse group of people. Basically, after approximately seven and a half years of work, we have a total of of over 750 academic teams, almost 150 biotechs, over 400 research groups working within the pharmaceutical industry, 25 patient organizations, and a number of regulatory agencies. Of course, the EMA is in it for Europe. We have FDA participation in some projects, and and so on and so forth. And so far, we have initiated 59 consortia. This is the figure, I think, from the beginning of April. And the total number of people involved in this research in these 59 projects is now over 7,000 researchers. So we have really quite a substantial impact now on the on the research on the research scene. So to come now to eTrix, why do we need eTrix? This has been said so many times, it's almost unnecessary, but I have it on my slide anyway, that effective management of data and knowledge in biomedical research is really a major challenge. And for all the reasons that were already discussed earlier today, we need to find effective ways to deal with this challenge if we're not going to be over overrolled by that tsunami of 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 data and the problems of dealing with it that that we saw on the slide earlier today. More specifically, from the point of view of the pharmaceutical industry, where we are primarily concerned with getting a drug to market and need today to be able to accompany that that drug development process with efficient biomarker discovery, with efficient validation of biomarkers, so that we can support what we're doing in the clinic with appropriate biological measurements, and also, if it's necessary, for example, provide a basis for development of a new diagnostic procedure, companion diagnostic, and so forth. We have to be able to deal with the analysis of these very complex, high-dimensional data sets in a very efficient way to make sure that we don't delay drug development simply because we haven't got the data analyzed yet. And so the utility of of that depends very much on having appropriate methods for doing this, both for collection, but also for management and sharing data. If you if you take a drug from the very earliest stages of medicinal chemistry and drug screening up to a clinical trial, you have to be able to deal with both your preclinical data and your clinical studies. We need to be able to deal with our genomic sequencing, our mutations, whatever other high-dimensional omics data are necessary. We're dealing in very many instances with longitudinal studies. For example, in animal models or cell culture models in the preclinical, the collection of data in the clinic is also, of course, a longitudinal process. And any of you who have tried to deal with correlation studies with longitudinal data collection know what sort of problems this can this can lead to. And at the same time, we have to be very mindful of data protection and privacy issues. We're dealing here with patient data. This is covered by the data protection laws in Europe. So in setting up systems to deal with this, we also have to make sure that we are compliant with all of this and deal with the problems inherent in transferring data across Europe, sometimes also to areas outside the European Union, where data protection legislation still has quite a variable landscape. So clearly, the bottom line is there's there's an unmet need for a system to do this kind of thing. And based on that that appreciation, this the eTrix Consortium was set up and started work towards the end of 2012. And we will be in business now until October 2017. We, that is a consortium of 17 partners, which now has the remit to provide services for IMI Consortium, but also for other EU-funded projects to help handle their data and and handle their analytical problems. And the the chessboard here just shows you the the participants in the eTrix Consortium. We have pharmaceutical companies like Sanofi, Merck, Pfizer, my own company, Bio, Lilly, Black, so on and so on, and Janssen. And we have academic partners, and we have the managing entity is the academic partner, the Imperial College in London. The overall coordination is in the hands of AstraZeneca at the administrative level and Pfizer on the scientific level. We have an SME company, Biosci Consulting in Belgium, who provides project management support for this this whole business, without which we would probably not be able to function. Standards you heard about from from Philippe before the coffee break, for example, led by C迪斯 and the University of Oxford, where he works. And as was also was also mentioned, we have a number of projects that are already on board and are being serviced by eTrix. And the five major IMI projects that Philippe mentioned are, you will recognize here, your Biopred, OncoTrack, AbiRis, PredictTB. And we have a number coming on board as we speak, for example, Preciseads, EMIF, and and Safety, and also non IMI projects, for example, BioAster in in France, and projects from the from the MRC here in Britain, RNA map was was one of those that was mentioned earlier today. Another aspect that I that I can probably go through quite quickly, because Philippe also mentioned this, is that the core of what we're doing is the development of of the Transmart platform as an open-source translational data warehouse. This this provides the 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 operational base for being able to to curate data, put it into a data warehouse, pull it out on a selective basis, and and start your analytical processes. The the system in and of itself has been around for for quite a few years. And for example, in 2010, already had a BioIT World Best Practices Award. And eTrix is one of a number of organizations worldwide who are now participating in the further development of this software and in in a direction that makes it fully functional and useful as a as a research tool. It's worth pointing out at this at this juncture, I think, also, that that eTrix is a lot more than Transmart. Transmart is the is the is the engine that that drives our activities. But we provide, based on the on the Transmart system, for example, the data curation services, the data harmonization services that were also mentioned earlier today. And so eTrix and Transmart are not synonymous. And eTrix has its place, therefore, in what we can call the Transmart community. The Transmart Foundation has already been mentioned earlier today. This is mostly academic consortium in the United States. There are also pharma companies who participate. Other instances in Europe, for example, the Hive in the Netherlands and and Trite are major movers. And a lot of the software development has been done in collaboration with Deloitte. And the major pharmaceutical contributors to to this community at the moment are Takeda, Janssen, Pfizer, and and Sanofi. And what we're doing collaboratively is contributing to the development of the open-source software package, which sits on top of a database where you can where you can store your information. And either this can be the the open-source Postgres SQL database, because an open-source system like this requires an open-source base. However, you will appreciate a number of pharmaceutical companies are involved in this effort. A lot of companies who are actually not in the consortium also have the system installed in-house. Most of these companies operate on an Oracle database. And so in parallel, we maintain a a branch of the software that will operate on Oracle. And our our goal, therefore, is to is to facilitate disease stratification and biomarker discovery by adoption of a common open-source platform, and we contribute to the development of that platform, by promoting data harmonization, by developing practice guidelines and resources for the reuse of data in the in the research community, and by providing advice and support for projects who require these kind of services. And these services, as I already mentioned, provide projects with data management analytical support. The platform can be installed on a server belonging to the project, or or it can be hosted externally on on eTrix's own server. We have a a large server installed in the in the computer center in in Lyon, in France. And depending on the needs of a project, eTrix can provide technical support and additional services, for example, such as data curation. So depending on on how the your own project is set up, depending on what facilities and expertise you have within your project, we can develop a program that that is customized to your needs. And for for all aspects of what the the project can do and provide, we have a series of training programs developed so that people can be trained in in what they need. So the the harmonization and standards you heard about before the coffee break. We have a public instance of the of the eTrix platform, which now contains data in the public domain. So if you want to find out what the platform can do, you can you can log into this this public database and play with the data that's that's there. And if you're uncertain about what you can what you can and cannot do with your data because of the legal aspects, because of informed consent aspects or whatever, there is a complete documentation on a code of practice, which at the moment is being reviewed by the European Commission, will ultimately become a a public guideline, which can help you with those with those kind of processes. So what what are we doing actually when it when we're when we're on the on the ground? What what does the eTrix platform look like? What what is the basic framework? I mentioned some of these aspects already in getting to where we are now. But basically, the the Transmart system itself is a study-centric data repository system, which allows you to collect data from all aspects of your of your project. As I already mentioned at the outset, we need to be able to handle everything from from the clinical trial data, the the animal studies, and all aspects of the preclinical data that have gone into a project. And so the the system is set up to be able to handle all of that. And through an API interface, you can take data out of this system into into the into analytical components that are an integral part of the of the of the eTrix platform, but can also you can also export it into the the native application of your choice for for further analysis. And the information that you derive from from the data, when you have turned that into knowledge, you can then you can store in a in a harmonized data system, which can also be linked to external sources, so curated external data, to provide a combined knowledge base that you can then draw on to further the the interpretation of the data that you're working on here. For for the person sitting at the at the computer terminal, it's interesting perhaps to know how you can actually operate on this system. And therefore, I'm just going to show very quickly a couple of slides to to demonstrate what the user interface looks like. Basically, what we have is the is the possibility of of a drag-and-drop type of of data selection and mouse-click initiation of analytical processes, which allows you very quickly to to review your data and have a first look at the data and ask, is there something interesting if I do a particular correlation analysis before going into a more detailed statistical approach, for example? Philippe already had a had a screenshot like this, which shows you the the way the data is presented in the Data Explorer. Those of you at the front of the room will be able to see that we have here, for example, this is this is from the publics from the public server, for example. We have studies from from GEO, asthma, breast cancer, and so on and so forth. So you can you can you can choose the study of your choice. And then open up the data tree, and you have then the complete listing of of the clinical data, the demographic data of the patients, for example. And these are coded, depending on whether they are high-dimensional data. Here you see a little a little DNA sign, or text text data, or continuous variables. So you know what kind of data you're dealing with and can make a reasonable decision as to what processes you can you can use to operate on that. And then simply, you can you can go into the data tree and click, for example, on something. This is this is a a cancer study. For example, time time to metastasis, you can take that as one of the the first variables. And you can then set a numerical limit to that. For example, greater than or lesser than 10 years for a breast cancer study like this. And you can do this then for for the for the patients with with the poor survival and good survival. Look for summary statistics, and you get information on the age distribution. And you have these then defined as subsets. In the same way, you can bring in, for example, receptor data from your clinical information. You can you get a display of receptor positive and negative in your two cohorts. You can do a quick chi-square test to look at the significance. You can see that the receptor difference the difference in receptor distribution is statistically significant. You can then go ahead and do a Kaplan-Meier, for example, and get a graphical output in this. This is a very simple example of of what you can do in just in a very few minutes with with the data in a system like this. It goes without saying, however, that in order to be able to operate on the data in this in this very efficient and and straightforward way, the the real art is in curating the data to get it into the data tree. And so the putting data into the into this platform is a very is a very curation-intensive business. But once you have it in there, you have enormous power to operate on it. I also mentioned in the architecture slide, API and dot data export. And so, for example, the the current version of Transmart, that's 1.2, has a dedicated API to export data into R for statistical analysis. And it all it also has interfaces to the Dalliance Genome Browser and also to Galaxy. And so it's it's a very straightforward process to export data from your warehouse into these systems and operate on it in order to get the the more detailed information that that you would like to extract from your data. So then a little bit to the to the program timeline. As already mentioned, we 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 kicked off in 2012. And in the time up to today, we have brought on board some of the the bigger IMI projects that are that are being serviced. We have, of course, a very close relationship with the Transmart Foundation and the others working on on the further development of the software package. And this resulted in release of of the the first open-source version of the software in 2013 and the current version, which was which was released in autumn of last year. Looking ahead, we have, as I said, about two and a half years still to go. We have at the moment a total of 13 projects supported, and that will expand to about 40 projects by the end of the the running time of eTrix. During that time, we expect to release eTrix III around about the end of this year. And there will be a further release of eTrix IV in the middle of 2016. And by the end of by the end of the project, we hope to release eTrix V. With each each of these releases, we'll be expanding the functionality, expanding expanding the analytical capabilities, and we'll be integrating some of the other aspects, such as the improved knowledge database handling and so forth along that timeline. But at the same time, we're developing something called the eTrix Network as a sustainability aspect of this project. Obviously, if we take on between now and the end of 2017, another 25 or 30 projects, some of these projects will still be very young projects at the time the eTrix officially ends its financing. And therefore, we need to ensure that the the service that is provided will be available for projects beyond the lifetime of of eTrix in its current incarnation, if you like. And the basic idea that that we're developing here is to provide a network of on a on a on a business development basis of product project management to be able to deal with these kind of services that research projects need. So evaluating, transforming, and loading data, identifying and maintaining the standards, defining and configuring analytical tools, making sure that the interface to the to the database and so forth works, providing training, providing legal assistance with collaboration agreements, archiving, and obviously, the installation and extension of the platform itself. The the idea is that this network will probably contain, among others, those who are currently working in the project. A lot of the the participants in the project will remain on board after the end of the IMI financing. And other interested and similarly oriented institutions or companies will join the network to provide this kind of a service service on a free on a fee-for-service basis. So that we we believe that then by the by the end of our running time, at the end of of 2017, we will have a system up and running and with a sustainable base to provide the kind of services that I've described to you. With that, I will close and say thank you to all the members of eTrix, without whom I of course could not stand here. And I'll be happy to take your questions. Yes?
Thank you very much. Very interesting talk. Your Transmart, or not your eTrix, Transmart development is very gene expression centric, isn't it?
Not not only.
Not only.
No, because I'm sorry if I gave you that impression. But as as I said at the outset, the the idea of this system is to be able to to handle all of the data that that you require, for example, in an analysis of a clinical trial or a drug development program.
Do you see in the future the development of this system in direction of integrating genotyping data or even whole genome sequencing data? Do you see that possible in the frame of this platform?
Absolutely. At the at the moment, the the capacity for handling genomic data is primarily in the area, for example, of transcriptomics. The original version of Transmart developed by GNJ was designed to handle, for example, Affymetrix data from clinical trials. In the meantime, you can put in RNA-seq data in in a similar format and handle that. And we can handle genome sequencing data in VCF format. And we have great efforts ongoing to be able to handle, for example, more complex genomic aspects like trans trans locations, alternate splicing, and so forth. But I mentioned also the facility of being able to handle longitudinal data. So, for example, for for OncoTrack and for some other projects, we can handle the output of drug trials in xenograph models or in cell culture. We can handle proteomics data, either the multiplex data from from plasma analysis, for example, but also mass spectrophometric proteomics data we can now get into the system. And so it's being expanded to take care of 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 needs in all of these directions.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned you were building on some of the analytics capabilities. Now, how will that move towards access to proprietary data sets? So if, you know, you want if companies have internal access to, you know, tools like Metabase and IPA, then do you work with, you know, Thomson Reuters, Kyogen, and, you know, external partners to to provide, to facilitate access to, you know, proprietary data sets which aren't in the public domain?
Potentially, one can do that. And as you probably saw, Thomson Reuters was is 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 active in the community. And so they have they have activities ongoing in that direction. And I mentioned that the that a system like this can be set up either in in a in the public domain And I mentioned that a system like this can be set up either in the public domain or behind your company firewall or institutional firewall. And so you have a lot of flexibility then in dealing, for example, with controlled data access or also what ancillary systems you then link into the platform with an API to deal with your own specific analytical needs.
Let's thank David and move to the next speaker.
Thank you very much.